Hello. I call the Parks and Recreation Subcommittee for Constitution and Bylaws to order at 5:54 PM. So, hello. Nice to see you all again.
Abigail, do you need somebody to take notes since Mike is the secretary and isn't in yet?
Sure, that would be helpful. I figure we're gonna be working on all these documents, so notes will happen organically, but you're welcome to as well.
I figure I'll just write down, you know, for him, just in terms of starting that kind of stuff.
Yeah, oh yeah. Just a reminder, we're here to review and provide recommendations for updating the Parks and Recreation Commission Constitution and Bylaws, and the context is that the documents were created about thirty years ago. You know, the internet's been founded since then, and so we just thought that maybe there's some efficiencies we could develop. We also have been experiencing very long meetings, so we thought perhaps by looking at the bylaws and the constitution, we could give greater authority to the director. Hi, Michael, we just started.
Hey guys, sorry about that.
Two minutes ago. Alright, so I was just giving, reminding everybody why we're here in some context. And so the objectives that we had was to clarify what the commission is responsible for and how it engages with the director and to the best of our ability, update the constitution and bylaws, so it reflects 21st century communication and collaboration practices. I know we've experienced the limitations of that, which I think we all accept. And we did an amendment to the constitution at our last meeting to try to give greater authority to the director and also try to have it be more of a collaborative relationship. And so I have those. And we also learned that we could do away with the constitution and focus on the bylaws. So I've identified maybe some areas where we want to fold the constitution over. And, you know, it was the recommendation of our fellow commissioners to just start from point one and go through and do a universal update.
And I just.
Jared is invited today because he had some input that he wanted to share. In particular, when it comes to operating funds. So I welcome him to join the meeting to just provide some input and guidance from his perspective. You all okay with that?
That's great, perfect.
Can I just chime in real quick, Abigail?
Sure.
Okay, yeah, so for the excuse me. For the large majority of the meeting, I'm just gonna stay silent and listen. I just want to learn more. But I did, you know, I think I said this at the last commission meeting, and I know Abigail and I have discussed it, but I think just from my point of view, gaining some real clarity on where my autonomy ends and the commission's authority picks up is really important. And I think I had also said to Abigail, like a clear understanding of the procurement policies. You know, at what point I'm supposed to come to the board, at what point I have the authority to make a purchase on my own. And, you know, just kind of, and I think that ties back into the whole concept of, you know, what authorities, what autonomy do I actually have? Because I'm getting a lot of mixed signals. And, you know, I think the sooner we get clarity on it, the better. And I explained those to some of you at the last commission meeting, but then, you know, today Lynn messaged me and she was concerned about the fact that I had done a sign up for the egg hunt. She would have preferred it had just been a show up, if you want to show up event. And that's totally like, you know, totally within her right, but you know, I, you know, I feel now that I may have overstepped, but at the same time, you know, I was talking to Gene about this earlier, like, I, I would, I would hope that as we figure things out, that clarifying, you know, whether something like that is within my authority as director would be great. Because I didn't even really know how to respond to Lynn, you know, I was, I was, like I said, I was embarrassed. But at the same time, I felt it was something we needed because I have no idea how many kids to expect at this event, no idea how many cars to expect. And that can theoretically change the entire ballgame, so I'd just like to get some clarity on that. And I think, I think all the commissioners would probably like clarity on that. You know, because Lynn may be looking at it one way, somebody else may be looking at it another way. And then me, I'm the one who actually kind of does the actual work and I'm, you know, not really sure. So that's where I just kind of wanted to be, and I wanted to share that with you guys, so you you understood where I was coming from.
That's pretty much, you know, I think, you know, to some degree, what you're talking about, Jared wraps into the idea of, you know, the world has come so far in terms of virtual and technological advancement and things like e-signups were, were probably never, were never part of the vision of the original constitution or bylaws of this group. And I do think there are things that, you know, for you know, for no one's fault, we've been doing kind of in a 20th century way instead of a 21st century way. And that's one of the things that we will be able to talk about as a group. As we make some recommendations on these documents too, so that we can add that piece. And that is definitely, you know, remember that when this bylaw, but this committee, subcommittee began, we were in the absence of a director. It was a pretty long absence of a director and we were trying to use some somewhat outdated guidelines to figure out how to move forward, move the commission forward. So now that you're at the helm, I do think that we do want to empower you to do a 21st century job.
Cool, great. Well, I can tell you this, we got fifty signups in less than twenty-four hours, so that was pretty good. Yeah, I was happy with that.
That's awesome.
Yeah, so I think, and also if you checked out the sign up, it's like, it literally takes two seconds to go through, so it's nothing cumbersome. But like I said, I'm the, I'm the shut off my mic and let you guys do it. And if you need my input on anything, say my name.
Thanks, Jared.
Clarify just that little anecdote. What was Lynn's reasoning for? Did she, did she say anything about where she was coming from that should have been?
No, it was just, she had just sent me a text message and she said, I don't think we should require registration. It should just be a show up. It, sorry, I'm looking at it now.
Oh, okay. She, so she just, she just questioned the logistics of it. She didn't say.
Yeah, it was saying it should just be, whoever wants to come to show up day of. And I've run events like that, but like, as Blythe said, it's 21st century now, we have great technology. And I think it also, because things have changed drastically in COVID time and and clearly it seems like there's an influx of younger families, et cetera. I, I don't know how to gauge even what.
No, no, I absolutely, I just was wondering if her, if she took, if she took issue with the procedural, you know, sort of a Kent Parks and Rec procedural issue, or was it she just had recommendations on how the event should be wrapped? That's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm not really sure, but I think yeah, it was, I think it was just a suggestion really, but like I said, it puts me in this position, like, you know, what am I supposed to do type thing? And, and like I said, I respect everyone's input and opinion. But I've been like getting different things from different people and I'm, I'm kind of just, you know, want to kind of know how to navigate the waters.
Got it, got it, got it. Yeah. And I think that a big thing that we're, a big goal for us is to have us, have the commission be collaborators. Not that you, that a director has to seek permission from, but more collaborators and advisors. Is that? That's what we're trying to get towards. And I think another thing that we're trying to avoid is disabling the director from being able to move an idea forward because they feel like they need to ask permission or don't know, like, don't, don't feel like they can just move an idea forward, but that they, they're always wondering if they have permission to do something. I think we, we want to alleviate that, so someone can develop programs and make decisions and get Parks and Rec going.
I could tell you that just from experience. It's not, it's not a great place for anyone to be in. It's like a purgatory, right? And and it ends up, just as you said, Abigail, just kind of stalling progress. And I think knowing one way or the other is just, that's the key, you know, sometimes the worst thing is not knowing, you know, so.
So Abigail, are you going to share the document? We're just going to kind of start there and make some proposed changes. I think that based on the feedback we got from the first time we went as a subcommittee back to the full commission, they liked the idea of being able to kind of see the strike throughs and the, and the, the options, so I guess if we can kind of continue that, that'll be a good way to have it be a very visual process for everybody when we bring it back to the group.
Sure. So I just wanted to, these were the amendments. Is it, I'm doing, showing both documents at the same time because I thought it would be helpful, but if your screen's too small and you want me to focus on one, let me know. It's okay to see both of them next to each other. Can you see, am I sharing anything with you?
Yeah, I can see.
The founding story of my company. Okay.
No, you had it up.
You had it up.
Okay. There you go.
You're good. Okay, great. So this was our, this is what we revised the last time, and I think actually we have to make some changes here other than the director duties. And what I've done in the bylaws is I've just added what I think we need to pull over from the constitution. So my hope was that we could start, we could work within the bylaws document and pull from the constitution and update as we do it. And where we see, we need to reference this document, we can go back to this document.
Sounds good.
Okay. Great. So Article One about the fiscal year. Well, I'm going to stop there, actually. So on the, on the constitution, there's Article One here, the board shall be called Parks and Rec Commission, and it's established by the town ordinance, and I'm assuming we should bring that over to the bylaws.
Yeah.
And then Article Two about the objective of the commission, I think we should have objectives. And I'm just curious if we want to have this, if we want to modify this in any way.
You have my, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, Kate.
No, 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 I, you, you go, you go, you go.
Oh, no, I'd rather eat a little pizza, but you seem to have something to say.
No, my only, my only thing that I saw in the objectives was I was wondering about the word maintain. And I was wondering about the responsibility, the commission's responsibility of maintain, of maintenance of the parks. It's something that we have a difficult time with. And so I, I thought maybe we could talk about the word maintain, whether maintain should be in there. It's not in there now, so. And I also, I don't know, I just wasn't sure about the word conduct. I don't know, understand why that, I didn't understand the word conduct.
Yeah, I don't understand what these words mean either. To provide, conduct, and supervise.
Maybe we change conduct and supervise to provide, maintain, and encourage the use of, or something like that, you know, I don't know, because we can do that through programming, but we can also do that through something like that.
Yeah, I like also encouraging the use of. I think that that's important language for us to have ownership of.
Yep. Public playgrounds, play facilities, indoor recreation centers, and other recreation areas and facilities, with the exception of the community house. I mean, I know we have programs that we put in the community house, like the Tai Chi, wasn't the Tai Chi in the community house?
Yes, it was. But are we not, we're not?
Maintain the community house. So maybe that's just a town property that we're allowed to put people in? I'm not quite sure what our purview over the community house is.
I don't either. So I think this is something we have a question about.
Yep.
And to be clear, I, I don't know whether the word maintain should be in there. Because I feel as though that's, it, it becomes, it becomes a little bit of a, of a sticking point, and we certainly don't want to be responsible for maintaining. I just think it's worth.
Yeah, because I also. So.
What's the question about the community house? I've been speaking with Joyce a lot about that, and I might be able to shed some light.
We just are not sure what the relation, like, what relationship does Park and Rec have to the community house?
So my understanding is that we are basically, while it's considered a recreational facility, in the truest sense, that it is not managed nor budgeted for by Park and Recreation. So it is a basically a town, a general town operated building, similar to how Town Hall would be a generally town operated building, and that we reserve it through Joyce. Just like we would if I wanted to use the Town Hall Conference Room.
So Jared, that would mean that if someone came to us with a proposal to use this for some kind of Parker Rec program, would we need to go through the town before we could give somebody approval to, for example, do a Taekwondo class every Tuesday night from seven to eight in a community house?
Exactly, yeah.
We can't just approve that right out?
Nope, we can't. We would, you know, we could in theory approve the program, but the dates would be pending community house availability. Now Joyce, I'm sure has the, I'm sure there's a, a like a priority use list, which with town sponsored events being at the top. However, let's say someone came in last week and says, hey, I want to have a wedding, here's all my paperwork, blah, blah, blah. Joyce books a wedding for an entire day on Saturday. And then tomorrow we have our commission meeting and we say, you know what, we want to do a bingo night on Saturday. They can't punt the wedding out of there. So, you know, basically, we would then have to change our date accordingly. Does that make sense, sir?
Okay, so really, it's, we don't have any control over the community house, so I guess maybe with the exception of the community house should stay there because we're not providing it, we're not maintaining it, and we're not necessarily encouraging the use of.
Yeah, I mean, what I would, the one thing I would say to that, and I don't want to get, you know, too hung up on it, is my hope is that we can make more use of the facility moving forward. It's a great, it's an awesome facility. There's so much we could do there. I was already thinking like we could do, you know, kids cooking class using the, you know, using, you know, the area in the basement. We can do bingo nights, we can do indoor, you know, craft events, movie nights, whatever. So there's a lot we can do there. But once again, we have to reserve it, just like we reserve a school facility. You know, so, I mean, I, I think it does need to be kind of listed as with the exception of, because there's really, we don't have any real say so. Like I said, we might have priority if two events were to come in at the same time. But other than that, that's about it.
Maybe there's somewhere.
But we don't also say Town Hall here. With the exception of Town Hall and Community House.
Yeah, but the Town Hall doesn't have recreation facility. It doesn't have a, you know, it's not a dance space or yeah, nobody's going to try to have a bingo night in the Town Hall or a cooking club.
So maybe we should be using that giant space in the town hall that we vote in.
I will say to Blythe's point, Abigail, I spoke with Barbara when going over the budget and learning everything, and she did say, on even in the budget, it is considered a rec facility, a recreational facility. It just does not fall under our umbrella from a managerial standpoint.
Okay.
So that language should probably then just stay in there with the exception of the community house. And there may be someplace further down in the, unfortunately, I did not bring my notes and stuff over here, but there may be someplace further down where it talks about actual facilities that we could put something about the community house, or we could be a little bit more specific about our relationship with the community house. But I think for right now, that should just stay there.
Okay. Now, Kate, to your point about maintain, I am, I, I am not sure about that. And if we want to challenge that in this rewrite and try to.
I think a good catchall would be to scrap maintain and just put manage. You know, we're responsible for the management of the parks, and I think that's kind of a catchall for what needs to be done. I don't know if you guys feel the same. And sorry, I don't, I don't mean to keep chiming in. I said I wouldn't talk much, but.
No, because I know, I agree, I, but I think that, because a lot of the maintenance does fall to us. And my, my, I've always been raising my hand, wondering if maybe that shouldn't be so much the case. That's, that's always what been my little thing, but, but I, so I, I think manage, I like manage better than, than maintain.
Yeah, I agree. That's great. Great choice. That's good. To appoint a director of recreation to handle administrative matters of the department. Okay, here's where we might be able to add a little language, number three, if we're ready to move on.
Yep.
This is, this is a, we've got a, you know, administrative assistant. That's what it sounds like to handle administrative matters and implement policies, you know.
Of the commission, yeah.
I think, I think we need to add some language that this is the autonomy piece here, right? We have to add some kind of language to give some authority.
Well, maybe we want to put direct in there, right, to direct to.
Well, yeah, the, first of all, is that, is that referring to the same person? Is this the director of recreation, also the director of Park and Recreation? Are we just missing a word?
Oh, that's.
We have some language under Article Seven that we could probably move into here.
Under Article Seven in the bylaws or in the constitution?
In the the constitution, I can read, I can, I'm in the Google Drive PR, P and R constitution doc that we were editing at one point. And we had, we had written the duties of director of Park and Recreation are to supervise and maintain the recreational activities and to pursue new activities which enhance the general program as determined in collaboration with the Kent Park and Recreation Commission.
I probably would not put all of that in there. This is the objective of the commission. I think when we get down to the duties of the director of Park and Recreation, that's where that belongs. However, I do think there is some language that could be echoed here, and the word I would use would be to collaborate.
Yeah.
To appoint an effective director of park and recreation to collaborate with the commission. And then something like in the handling of administrators, administrative matters of department and implementation of policies and programming, about that.
You're so good at this.
Policy then programming, yes.
In the handling of, yeah, administrative, so that'll be a strike through. Administrative matters of the department and implementation of policies and programming. And then strike the rest.
I would also add into there, and this always happens a lot, it happened in my old job too. So you said policies and programming, and I would also put something regarding sorry, I'm just trying to think of the right wording, but basically related to the you know, management, once again, I just keep using the same words, management and, you know, putting forth park development plans, whatever, however you want to say it, because at the end of the day, it's park and recreation. So policies, programming kind of deals more with the rec side.
Planning, policies, planning and programming.
Management.
Management, I'm sorry.
So it could just be three. So to appoint an effective director of Park and Recreation to collaborate with the commission in handling of administrative matters of the department, comma, implementation of policies and programming, comma, and management.
But say in management of park system.
Management of park systems.
System, systems, whatever you want to say. Also excellent use of the Oxford comma, Blythe.
Hey. Yeah, we are kindred spirits in that.
Yes, exactly.
Good. And then, yeah, just pull out that second, that, that other paragraph there for now.
Hang on, just a sec, do you need me?
All right. I would say handling, just to be a stickler.
The commission and the handling, yeah. Let's get it right, because this is what we don't want to have happen in our meeting with the full commission. Okay, so.
All right, so back to the constitution. Yeah, we probably have to get all this nitty gritty out of the way, so we probably have to throw in the membership piece.
Yes, and I just want to see if. Okay, yeah, we don't have membership in this one. So. Do we, we want to start, we want to dive in the membership?
Yep.
Okay. You know, the, the document that we pulled from the big, what, what's it called, the big town book, what's that called?
Or, or.
The ordinance. The ordinance, yes, thank you. What did you guys make of the, it says, said commission shall hereafter consist of the third, that's third selectmen and not less than six nor more than nine electors of the town. Who shall be appointed annually. Did we talk about that at all before?
I remember it coming up in the, the general meeting and the term elector, I think was explained to me in someone that was you know, either a registered voter or a landowner.
But I'm just, I'm just noting that, remember, we've been talking about whether or not the commission should be more than six people.
Okay.
Yep.
And the ordinance seems to say or suggest nine is the max. And I just thought, I didn't know whether we had talked about that.
Where is that in here, Kate?
It's section ten, two, point number two.
So not less than six nor more than nine electors shall be appointed.
So I thought, I mean, again, with not wanting to you know, wanting to give as much space as we can in the bylaws, we could just take that language over. I mean, we don't have to have nine, but if the bylaws allowed for nine, if the ordinance allows for nine, we could have the bylaws allow for nine.
So I think it's worth dropping this entire section in for review after, yeah, after section one of membership, just as a, you know, and put it all in yellow and just say, hey, look, this is you know, this is, this is what it says. You know, this is, this is what it says in the ordinance, but it differs from what's said here, and we could have a little. I mean, I don't know if we wanna discuss things or we just wanna come up with a recommendation, but certainly the ordinance, if we're, especially if we're doing away with the constitution. The ordinance and the bylaws should match.
A new color.
Good choice. Oh, I like the purple.
You liked the purple? You thought, I thought it was too.
Too purply?
Too vibrant.
Favorite color, so no, no problem there. Green is.
I'll just go, go, don't worry about me over here.
Alright, and so, and so in the original document here, the original bylaws, it doesn't say anything about the. Third selectman, or does it?
No, not in the bylaws, in the constitution. Sorry, so this is all. This is all constitution language.
Now there's section six, I see, it's actually says. Third selectman.
Yeah, sec, yeah, sections, the third selectman of the board of selectmen is an ex officio member.
And the director of park and recreation is an ex officio, so that means that the director is supposed to be able to vote. Right?
Uh, yeah.
So that's not what.
Have the right to vote?
You've had the power all along, Jared.
I've had it all along.
Had it all along. Wizard of Oz, you had it all the whole time.
There should be elected two members. So I guess the other thing was, didn't we wonder why we had to have alternates? Alternates. So it says that, you know, you have your. Your six to nine electors. And a panel of two alternates.
So maybe after, i- is this, is this title of this section, membership?
Yes.
So maybe after the membership section, we have Article four now, alternates, and we actually create one. You know what I mean? Cause there's, again, there's all this language from the ordinance that should go in there, and we should understand. How they work, you know, how they're elevated, what their purpose is, so I would take this whole, you know, alternates thing. And drop that in.
Not gonna make that mistake.
In that same color, whatever it was that you chose.
Yeah. Lavender.
That is from, again, that is from the, um. Ordinance. Having fun yet, Jared?
Yeah, no, this is, it's good stuff here. I like learning all this stuff.
Okay.
It's our favorite way to spend our time.
Going over the language of documents, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Should we go, let's go back up though, wait, I don't think we finished the whole section two, okay? So constitution language, okay, membership, constitution, are we, do we have any other changes or suggestions? Town council consists of six members, two alternate members. Members of said commission shall be appointed by board selectmen thirty days. Of the ordinance, what ordinance?
The town ordinance, I would think.
Within thirty days of the. Ordinance, I mean, the ordinance was made in. The membership of commission should be appointed by the board of selectmen within thirty days of the effective date of the ordinance. Don't they have to like re-certify our membership every January?
Yes, yes.
I don't think it's the effective date of the ordinance. I think that was probably left over from, this is probably the original language when they were forming the. Commission.
Yep.
So I think we just need to confirm maybe Jared or Lynn.
Yeah, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Does it mean the annual meeting?
I think it means the annual meeting, and I, yeah, I'm not gonna look it up, but I think it's thirty days of the annual meeting, and that's when we. Would be recommending. The, um, commissioners.
Yeah.
Town annual meeting.
Sorry, I can't, I don't know how to mute myself. I don't know how to make the phone.
Yeah, at the town annual meeting each year, there will be elected two members. So should we just merge these two things?
At the town, there would be elected two members of said commission to serve for a term of three years and two alternates to serve for a term of one year. Is that, that really how we do it? I don't know.
Well, no, it's not at the town annual meeting. It's, the way we do it now is the commissioners. We, we don't, we, we decide who's on the commission.
Right, and then we take it and give it to the town, and they approve our recommendation.
Yeah, so this, this thing that's happening here does not happen.
No.
Are you sure, are you sure that's just not, that's not just saying, I mean, we, we do. Our, our suggested people do go to the board of selectmen and get approved. Isn't that basically what, what this is saying?
Right, I think, I think what, what was going on here is that they're trying to talk about term limits. Um, and again, the ordinance language was the founding language, so I think they were trying to set up what was gonna happen to set up the convention first. And then how to perpetuate it over time. So my feeling is that what we wanna do is we wanna say, maybe take some of the section three language about. Yeah, cause it says something about ordinance, about, um, alternates. So the part, maybe back in section one. The park and recreation shall consider six members and two alternate members, each of whom shall be elector of the town, which will hold office, and then. A fem, you know, members will serve a three, a term of three years, is that right? But they don't always, because sometimes you're filling a spot.
That is addressed very oddly.
Later.
Somewhere. I can't remember where. Oh, maybe in, uh, meet, in, in, hmm. Where did I see that? Maybe, no, maybe I'm thinking of when somebody. Standing or can't be at a meeting, I think that's what I was thinking about. There's nothing about resignation. And what I want to do and a res, if somebody resigns in mid-term. Well, but if you look at section four, I, I, I thought that section four was odd, may, maybe I'm jumping ahead, but, but. It said, any vacancy that may occur on said commission shall be filled by the commission until the next annual town meeting. That doesn't make, that doesn't, just doesn't make sense to me, is it?
I think it, I think it's basically giving the commission the power to. Choose new representation without having to wait for the town meeting, which is gonna affirm everybody, so like, let's say somebody drops out in March.
Right.
You have the power to fill their spot.
Me, for example, don't get it.
Like, if you're dropping out, you have the power to either advertise for a new full-term member or to elevate one of the alternates to full status. Without then waiting until January to have the.
Okay, okay. It's just, it's just an oddly worded sentence. I thought it meant, I thought they, what they meant to say was. Shall not be filled by the commission until the next annual town meeting.
Yeah, but, yeah, but we do.
Know what I mean?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, just, uh, it's just an awkward sentence, it seems to me, but anyway.
So any vacancy that may occur on said condition. Can be filled, should we just clarify it and just write can be filled by the commission?
Maybe.
May be filled.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Before the next town. Meeting.
Yeah.
May be filled. For.
And if we've read that wrong, we'll, it will be told that we've read that wrong, but.
Yep. Cause that. It's also not, like, if, if we've been not, because we've been filling it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, well, it's back to three for one second. The annual town meeting, there will be elected two. Members of said commission to serve for a term of three years and two alternates to serve for a term of one year. I think that we should just take, we should just put something in the section one that says. Um, commissioners. Shall be elected to a term of, to serve a term of three years. Alternates. Shall. Serve a term of one year. And then that language, or until their successor shall be elected and won qualifying, yeah. Which shall be, yeah, shall serve a term of three years, alternates shall.
Not to embarrass myself, uh, I don't even understand what that means. One year or until their successors shall be elected and qualify? Can someone just explain that to me? I don't mean to sound.
I, I take that to mean, I take that to mean alternates. Continue, can continue to serve as alternates longer than a year until they're replaced. That's what I, that's what I read that as.
Yeah. Shall we just say that?
Um, I mean, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I, you know, I'm, listen, I'm not, I'm not the brightest linguist there is, so it could just be me. But, uh, I appreciate the, at least clarification.
One year and two successors.
I guess, yeah, I guess you just read it a few times for it to really. Go through the layers of.
I think for me, it's the word shall. I don't know, I feel like it should just say, or until their successor. Success, if its successors are elected. I don't know what shall be means, um.
Yeah, their successors are elected rather than, and qualify, I don't know what qualify means.
Yeah, that, I was gonna say the same thing.
Successors are elected.
Elected period.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Trying to keep transparency here as well as I can.
Yep, this is, you're doing good. Well, can I make a stickler comment? Can you make a semicolon after, serve a term of three years? Instead of a comma?
Nothing I'd like to do more.
There you go. I love my semicolons. Alright, so, do, do. Alright, that would mean then that section four becomes section three, et cetera. Vacancy that may occur on said commission may be filled by the commission before, yep, good. Commission shall choose from its membership and may choose such officers as. So choose from its membership, for what? I choose you. Um, how about the commission shall choose from its membership. Such officers as it deems necessary.
Yes.
So just get rid of, no, just wait, Abigail, go back.
Nope.
Just, just strike out. And may choose.
Could have been a draft that got filed by accident.
Crazy. Section five becomes four. And that looks. Right. Is ex officio hyphenated? Anybody know, off the top of your head?
I think it is.
I would have looked it up a number of times.
I'll Google it.
Yeah, so that's probably.
Well, Google doesn't think, it thinks, it thinks, does not.
Yep, Google does not think so.
And, and we define, do we, so as an ex officio member, that person is a voting member of the commission. Unlike an alternate.
Well, if, we, we were, it was determined that our third selectman was a voting member, and so an ex officio. Member is, wait a minute.
From the office.
Members that serve as ex officio members have all the rights and obligations of the board. Meetings or committees that they serve on, this includes the right to discuss, debate, make decisions, and vote.
Okay.
If you want a non-voting, you would say non-voting ex officio member. So both have votes. Three Kentucky.
I'm sorry.
I think, I think we should make that known to the commission.
Oh, yeah, I have a note here, just.
And if, here, if the commission for some reason. Doesn't want, then we should say, a, a non-voting ex officio, we should. You know what I mean?
But that would, that would be something to be taken up for a lot of discussion, because that would change the ordinance.
Oh, yeah, that would change the ordinance.
But I don't remember Leslie ever, ever voting, do you guys?
No.
No. But I think that if she had had a ability to vote, maybe we would have had some. Maybe it would have been a different dynamic.
Yeah, no, I, I think, I think it, I'm all in favor.
Yeah.
Something to think about, if I'm able to vote, that puts the vote at eight people, if I'm not mistaken, which is an even number. So I don't know if this addresses that, but if. I don't know even what constitutes a majority vote or whatnot, but just, just something to think about. It would put it at an even number, so in theory, it could be a four-four split.
So maybe we need to go back to that whole number thing. And just make a note that one of the things we wanna say is, should we discuss that it should be an odd number of.
Yeah, it doesn't make any sense that it's not an odd number. Except, well. Except that whole thing with the. Even, oh, I don't know, maybe that's, that's something, maybe we can put it in the notes to talk about.
Just to highlight that, we can talk about that.
I would like to definitely take a look at section eight. When we're ready.
I'm sorry, uh, section, so we're gonna leave alternates, section eight of what?
Wait, are we gonna leave, we need to review alternates, we have.
Oh, did you want this section, this piece, this piece here, Kate?
Yeah.
So three consecutive absences of, of a member may result in the termination of that member from the commission?
I guess may result, I guess that's, that's okay.
Yeah.
So it's not a definite, I just, you know, you know, that all these, these meetings. As I think I've expressed to you all.
Yeah, there's a lot of meetings, but again.
They're not getting any shorter, what the heck?
Um, I would, I would. I would, I would.
How about we put, um, regular, can we put the language in here about, because there's a difference between the two, one's regular and one's special?
You can take your absences or remember from.
The regular meeting.
From a regular. Meeting may result in, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could.
I mean, I, I, I think that, I mean, I think it is, there might be nice to have something in there to say that you can't just be. You know, you, you can't, you can't be completely dead weight and not have it. You know, have consequences, so.
And really that should go three consecutive absences of a member from a regular meeting. Sorry. And I would, I would also suggest dismissal. Rather than termination.
Second, sorry.
Yeah, been terminated from, it sounds such.
Yeah. This is not a job with volunteers.
Yeah.
Will be an article written about it in the paper.
Okay, alternates, there is hereby created a panel of two alternate members to the. Not, again, we're not creating it. We could just say there. There will, you know, section one can be there will be.
A panel of two.
Yeah. Okay, each such alternate member shall be an elector of the town, shall be appointed upon recommendation of the park recreation by town meeting.
Annual town meeting.
Yes, unless it's in the middle of a term.
Oh.
Alternate members shall serve for terms of one year commencing with the date of. The annual town meeting and terminating. Upon the day of the subsequent annual town meeting, the park and recreation commission is authorized to appoint alternate member to fill an uninspired term. Until. Alternate. Member to fill that unexpired commission term, like a term of a commissioner, I think that's what they're talking about, right?
Yeah, I think that's what they're trying to talk about, an alternate member to fill an unexpired commissioner.
Term, yeah. Till the next annual town meeting. Panel of alternate shall assist the park recreation commission to. Assist the in. Assist the with performance of its duties, why don't I? We don't assist somebody to perform. Shall assist the park and recreation commission. In performance of its duties. Long as you're at the dress rehearsal. Performance of its duties. Duties and accept. And hereafter, right? Okay. Performance of its duties. And accept us hereafter provided may not vote on matters before the commission with a capital C.
That's what I thought.
Member of the park and recreation commission is absent from any meeting of the commission or is disqualified from acting on a matter before the commission. Okay, such absent or disqualified member may designate an alternate member to take a seat on the commission. In the event that an absent or disqualified member of the commission fails to so designate an alternate, the majority of the members of the commission not absent or disqualified. May designate. An alternate to act for such absent or disqualified members subject to the provision of section nine, blah, 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 yeah, that's fine, I mean, that's, that just means. This is, this is about elevation, that we're not, we don't elevate alternates at every meeting. As we learned.
But if, like, I remember Kate asked this in an email, and then I seconded it. If we're absent and there's not a quorum, aren't we, aren't we the person that's absent supposed to say who we'd want elevated in our absence?
Yeah, according to this.
According to this, we are, yeah.
So.
So that's something I think we want to remind everybody of.
Yeah, I think this is just another, let's look at, you know, this item five here. Is this how we are going to do it, that if I'm not gonna be there, I can say, okay, I want Julia to be my. Person. Or if I don't choose somebody, then you guys can choose somebody. And you fight over who you choose, I don't know.
Well, I'm fine either way.
Okay. I just think it's worth reviewing. So I see it's going on your reviewing sheet there. And this is again, the whole minority representation of political parties, ah, there you go.
Is this where it is?
Yeah, it's right there, right there in five, it's right at the end of five.
Why? What does this have to do with political parties?
Well, that's a really great question.
Like.
Right, have they been trying to balance? Political party representation on the commission that has said absolutely nothing. In the ordinance or the bylaws or the constitution about X number of people must be of one party, X of another party, and it said nothing there. So I think we need to just highlight that for. Potential taking out.
Yeah.
Yeah, does party affiliation come up at the board of selectmen meeting when they're approving? Whom we're putting forward for the commission?
And if that's the case, you know, we've never been asked, I've never been asked what my political affiliation is, so how would they even know?
Well, they, 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 you, they have to confirm that you're a vote, you're an elector, that you're a voter and member of the town.
Yeah.
So when they look at that, they see your party affiliation.
So theoretically, if all of the volunteers to be on the commission were all Republicans, they would not approve that?
That I don't know, that I, I, who, who knows, I don't, that's a good question, but I. It doesn't. Yeah.
So is this a discussion or should we?
So I would love to know what that.
Yeah, I'm just curious, I don't think, I don't think, I mean, I feel like this is probably some kind of old. Ancient language that's just still sitting there, I don't, you know.
Because the lawyer, didn't the lawyer wasn't under the, I thought, I got the sense in once something that he wasn't under the impression. That I have to just check something. Because I got that, I got that sense.
And I suppose we have to read the provisions of section nine, one, eight, seven, A of the Connecticut general statutes. Maybe that would, maybe that would explain it.
Right on that.
Jump on that, Mike. I think we're just curious.
Yeah, no, yeah, no, there was nothing. Specific.
I think it's worth mentioning, you know, just that as we go through this, because not everybody. On the commission will have read all this stuff, and I do think it's interesting that. At least this language existed in the ordinance, I don't think it exists in the bylaws. But we'll have to.
No, it doesn't.
No, no, there's no, nothing.
That's, you know, maybe there's a reason that it does not exist in the bylaws, maybe now when the bylaws were.
Right.
Were. Updated or something.
There's nothing in the constitution or the bylaws about all that.
Nope, so it's probably worth noting on the notes there too, Abigail, that there's nothing in the. Subsequent documents to the ordinance that say anything about political parties.
Okay.
It's interesting that this alternate section was, was reviewed as that in two thousand twelve. So that's fairly recently.
So, Abigail, can you share again?
Oh, sorry. I stopped sharing just because I was going away from these documents. I got a lot of crap on my computer.
Yeah.
Do we have a hard stop on the meeting, guys? Yes, I was hoping that we could run for an hour, and it's been about an hour.
Well, what, I mean, we're at the end of a section. Aren't we, let's, let's look at number six and then be done, what do you think?
Okay.
Yes.
So.
Number six under alternates.
Oh, number six under alternates.
Yeah.
Great, yeah.
Yes, when an alternate number is designated to act for a disqualified or absent member of the commission as provided in blue, blue.
Yeah.
Such, and we may need to update subsection, whatever, um. Because this is a subsection of this document, so we have to see where. As for, you know, when in subsection ten, because this is gonna be a different. Okay.
This is from the ordinance.
No, right, that's from the ordinance, so we're gonna have to update that as provided in, and then we're gonna have to make a reference to wherever in this new document. It is, so we just have to highlight that. As something that we know we're gonna have to update. Later, once all the other changes and formatting are done, you know what I mean?
Right, 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 it's gotta refer, it's gotta refer to the right place, yeah.
Yeah. I would just, yeah, exactly. All right.
If I don't put it in there.
Yeah, that's perfect.
I'll lose it forever.
Okay, such alternate member shall be entitled to vote on matters before the commission. Comma. It's not a semicolon, is it? Provided.
It is a semicolon.
Shouldn't be. Provided, however, that any such alternate member shall not be entitled to vote for any officer. Oh, so, okay, so they can vote for another commission in, in place of another commissioner, but they don't have an officer's level vote.
Okay.
That's what that says.
I don't understand what that means.
So that means if Lynn is out. And we run a meeting and Julia is elevated to Lynn's position, Lynn does not get to vote, I mean, Julia does not get to vote for Lynn because Lynn's an officer. This is what this means.
And you know what else, you guys, this must be language that's taken from every single commission in the, in the town. So this probably has relevance and other commissions, maybe perhaps more so than on our commission, do you know what I mean?
Yeah. But I do think it's important, I think it's important to note in our little, you know, hey, by the way, people.
Yeah, yeah, totally.
If an alternate replaces an officer, they don't have a vote. Provided, however, that any such alternate member shall not be entitled to vote for any officer of the commission, yeah.
So then do we have to do something where we elevate, like last meeting when Michael was. Elevated to become the chair to run the meet, but did that happen in a formal way, so he was running the meeting and acting as chair? So then we would elevate somebody to take Michael's spot? Elevate an alternate to take Michael's spot?
Can I try to do it real quick?
Yeah.
I'm actually interpreting this differently. I read it as when an alternate member is designated to act. For a disqualified or absent member of the commission as approved in subsection, blah, 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 such alternate member shall be entitled to vote on matters before the commission, provided, however, that any such alternate member shall not be entitled to vote. For. Any officer of the commission, as in voting for officers, electing people.
Oh, so can we change vote for to elect?
Though I'm just, that's just the way I'm interpreting.
Yeah, I think you're right about that.
You and vote for should be stricken, yeah, that's good, okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's vague, you can, when you can interpret something, either way, we know the wording is not good.
All right, so, um, I guess then, you can take that out, yeah, take that out over there.
And that is something we learned. When Darlene joined the meeting in February.
Right.
Um, and alternate replaces an officer. I think it's still worth, okay, maybe we don't need to.
Yeah, I think just leave it, and then capitalize commission and we're done for today.
Great.
That was the, that was a lot, I mean, of the, that was good, well done.
Yeah, so we got through.
How many pages?
We updated the objective.
Yeah.
We added alternates. Um, so we haven't gotten through. A lot.
Yeah, but that, that, maybe, that, that was, that was the sticky part, you know, I think that was sticky, the others, other stuff may be a little more straightforward.
Yeah, I think the other stuff will go, will go more quickly.
And we've also already thought through the language for, for the director. A little bit, and then maybe you just need to fine tune that a little bit.
Right.
And obviously, we're not gonna talk about the secretary anymore, right?
No.
So.
Okay. Well, hey, everybody. Nice work.
Thanks, everybody.
I will ping you all. To get another meeting, but it seems like this time works. Wednesdays around five thirty.
Yep.
It's just with so many parks and rec meetings now, it's harder, it's harder to slice these, slot these in.
It is, I hope we can. I mean, I think it's great that we have so many things to talk about with Park and Rec, and it's so energized, but oh my goodness, I thought we created two meetings so that we would have two shorter meetings.
Amen, sister.
Yeah.
Because frankly, I mean, I, I, I'd rather, if they're just gonna keep going on forever, I'd rather just go back to once monthly. Bang it out.
Yeah.
Two monthly, you know. Two monthly sessions that go that long is really tough.
I think if we do go back to once monthly, then it really. It, it especially begs the question of where the autonomy.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, because we can't go a month. Wi- without discussing certain things if. I do not have a certain level of autonomy, I'm not saying I need it either way, I'm just saying it one ties into the other. You know, if a lot is gonna have to be filtered back through the board, then I think two is, two is imperative, because a month could make.
Well, and this is part of the, this is part of the argument that we need to make to the entire commission, is that the reason that we need to give more power to the director. Is because we need to get away from what's been happening now, we, when we didn't have one. Um, and when we were trying to make all these decisions and. Um, you know, maybe what we do is we just go back to a slate of regular monthly, but then those special meetings are specifically quick. Half an hour, Jared just needs to check one, two, three things with us, not a full agenda every single week.
I don't know why we.
That's where we need to go.
No, we can't put every agenda item on for the special.
Absolutely.
And I think, I do agree that, like, Jared should say, here are the two things I need to talk about, or I don't need to talk about anything, and sure, if. The commissioners need to talk about something, we all can raise our hand and say. I need the special meeting for this topic.
Right, but the special meeting should be short, and the full agenda should be, should be longer, but it will be more streamlined if we give Jared some authority. We're not gonna have those two and a half hour. Meetings again, so.
I think the perfect example of this scenario you guys are talking about being put into play is. So let's say last Monday, we had our, our meeting, right? And that was the one for the month, but then I get this call from the laser tag guy. And he says, hey, we have this great opportunity, I can't say to him, hey, I gotta wait another month until we can go over this, I would then email you guys, say, listen, we have a great opportunity here. Um, I'd really like to call for a special meeting, the special meeting will specifically talk. I would then email you guys, say, listen, we have a great opportunity here, um, I'd really like to call for a special meeting, the special meeting will specifically talk about only laser tag. As Abigail said, fifteen minutes, twenty minutes, the guy makes his presentation, we discuss it, we vote on it, and then I can go. And do whatever I have to do to get the program up and running.
Yep.
Yeah, and I think that's a great way to, you know, I, I do think that's a great way to. I guess streamline is the right word, yeah, streamline things, you know.
But I think, you know, because Lynn, when she was. Running the show and getting, keeping this thing going, um, there was a lot that came up that she needed our input on, so we had a lot of special meetings, and it was very. Very much like, we had this one isolated thing, but it was hard because they just kinda came up whenever, so we were always. And so I think the thing that we like is having a held meeting, that's. The first Monday of the month to pick up all the extra stuff. That you haven't gotten feedback on.
Got it.
So they're not just like popping up whenever you need, but we try to. Consolidate them into one time.
Yeah, yeah, I, exactly, that's what I thought we were kinda talking about, you know, most, most things will be in that one meeting, but if there's anything time sensitive. Then we'll have the special meeting, yeah, I think that certainly is, makes a lot of sense.
I, I, I don't think we necessarily need to wait till we're finished with this document to start talking about that at the. At the commission level, I mean, to talk about that at our next meeting.
Yeah.
And how, how can email, how can email be used if, under the, with the Freedom of Information Act, like. How, how could we make email be okay for approval of laser tag and still, you know?
Yeah, I, I think that's another question for me too. Um, and, and once again, I come from such a different background, so I don't mean to, to be disrespectful or to be stepping on anybody's toes, at the end of the day. You guys are the head honchos, and, but, you know, it's weird for me, like. Uh, you know, I'll send an email out, right, and, and. It, it, I know, like I said, that we really can't have any email discussion because of, everyone says, because of freedom of information, right? But I guess I just don't understand, and, and, you know, pardon me for my ignorance, but. People have the right to foil anything we say via email, so why does that mean we can't discuss it via email, I don't know if I'm barking up the wrong tree. But everybody keeps saying, oh, freedom of information, you can't talk about it over email, but why not? I don't, and someone just correct me, I'm, I'm just, in my old town, we just.
Great question. What, 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 what do you mean foil it?
So foil, it was Freedom of Information law, that basically, so like, for example, if someone wanted information on. Um, we did this big grant proposal thing, we got like five hundred thousand dollars from the state of New York, and someone in the town wanted. I don't know, she was, she just for some reason wanted all the information about it, so we got a foil request, and I got a letter from the town clerk asking for all emails relevant. To, uh, that topic, and I forwarded all the emails over, and then that was the end of it.
Right, right, so you just make the emails public? How couldn't, yeah, that's what I.
Yeah, I, I know, I know, according to minutes I've read of other parks and rec in our area. Um, some do vote. On email and others do discuss planning logistics via email. So I think that we should be able to use it to communicate with each other, maybe not vote, voting is a little, like. Some of the votes seem to be extremely formal, but at least be able to have a. Like, somebody inform us and us be able to say, that's great, or you know what, we should have a meeting and discuss this.
Right.
Like, yeah, that's fine, go for it.
Would be, do you feel like you can, or, you know, is there some kind of like a listserv for park and rec people? I think it would be worth us starting to pull together some, what are other towns doing? Um, type of thing, so we, so we have something to go with here, because we know in this. Bylaws, we're gonna have to include a significant section that does not exist about twenty first century technology and communication. Um, so this is the perfect opportunity for us to then, you know, after some. Maybe some discussion at the commu- commission level, bring forward a recommendation of language to be included in the bylaws going forward. But the first thing that I would ask would be, well, what are other towns doing, like, are we, what are other commissions in our? In our town doing, um, you know, because, you know, if we, if we suddenly decide that we're gonna change our voting policy. Cause we feel like we can, because a bunch of surrounding towns are doing it, I would imagine that might. Be an issue with the board of selectmen, like, you know, where do we have to go with all that? But it might be nice, at least for us to start figuring out. What are other towns doing, how much are they using, are they completely prohibiting? Um, you know, emailed. Correspondence between members, you know, between meetings, or do they use email to vote or to make decisions or? What, it might just be good for us to start figuring that out.
I'm sharing something with you that I created. That's like a matrix comparing Falls Village, Sharon, Cornwall, Washington, Salisbury, Roxbury, and Kent. Um, because I just, and I started looking at the population, how they operate, the annual salary for recreation, how they work. This is all about commissions, um, what they oversee. Um, and then trying to like go through their annual budget to understand. Um, you know, the line items, and again, like I did this while I was on. Maternity leave, and I don't fully trust myself with the analysis I did of the budgets. Um, but I did start to try to read. Uh, minutes to understand how these different groups work. And I think we can continue to read minutes or even just talk to commissioners at other towns. So I just started it, and I didn't get very far, because. Didn't have a ton of time. But I did it also to understand like what was. You know, what was being asked of other parks and rec directors, because at this time, we were trying to figure out what the job description was, so. It could be a good tool for us to, just if anybody wants to poke around. Put whatever you find.
Cool.
Yeah, I'm just, I just looked at it, it, that's, that's pretty cool. Um, yeah, and I think it's good to do comparisons, I mean, all my experience too is in New York, and I know it's just right over the border, but. A lot of different laws and policies and everything else, um, if anything, New York's actually probably more regulated than Connecticut, so. But I, 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 my first perception, I think like, like, and Abigail said, you know, learning what other towns do will be im- imperative, but. My first perception was the fact that we, you know, vo- I, I would say voting via email, like, I, that's not something I would ever wanna really. Go down that road, but at least discussing, like I sent out the laser tag thing, but if someone had a concern, hey, Jared, um, you know. I have a few questions, like, like informal dialogue on things, I think it's good and productive, you know, and then it makes our meetings more productive too. So if, let's say Kate looked at the laser tag website and said, oh, I'm a little concerned, those, those, uh, the, the. Lasered shooters they use, look, lo- large, they very much look like guns, Jared, I have a lot of concerns, X, Y, and Z. I can begin to address those ahead of time, so I can go into the meeting with answers, um, to those questions, you know. Um, so I think just for the sake of, it, it's, it, it. Sorry, my phone is ringing, um. You know, just for the sake of fluidity, I think it's just so, it's so, um, so important.
Yeah. It's twenty first century.
Yep.
All right, I gotta run, guys. Thank you all.
Hi, Kate.
Night, everybody.
See you Monday, I, um, adjourn this meeting at seven thirteen.